You ready?
Yes, I am. I'd like to call the order that September 19th, 2024. Thanks. Clackamas Board of Commissioners Business Meeting. County Administrator Schmidt, can you call the roll, please?
Thank you. Acting Chair Schrader. First, Chair Smith and Commissioner West are out of the office today. There is still a quorum present. Commissioner Schrader will chair this meeting. Staff support today, Jane Veto, County Council, Andrew Jiraki, Clerk to the Board. Roll call, Commissioner Scholl.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Present.
Chair Schrader.
Here. I was going to ask Commissioner Scholl to lead us in a pledge of allegiance. Okay.
I'd like to lead this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty. Good morning, everyone. We are holding this meeting in person and virtually. If you've joined us via Zoom for this meeting and are interested in providing public comment, we will prompt you regarding on how to do that when the time is right. General public comment will be taken at the usual allotted time. I would like to remind all participants, including staff, all elected officials and members of the public, that Robert's Rules of Order will be followed in this business meeting. We welcome your opinions and your polite participation. I will now recess as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as the Housing Authority Board. Gary, what's the first item?
Thank you, Chair. This is the Housing Authority of Clackamas County Consent Agenda. Housing Commissioner Ann Leinster is not able to join you today, so it's just the three of you Commissioners. Tony, would you please read the Housing Authority? I'm sorry, Andrew, I apologize. Andrew, would you please read the Housing Authority Consent Agenda?
Housing Authority Consent Agenda. Item 1A. Approval of a resolution designating authorized officers to finalize, execute, and deliver all documents and agreements related to the Hillside Park redevelopment and project, including Buildings A and B. Funding is through federal, state, local, and private funding sources. No county general funds are involved.
All right. We read the consent agenda. Does any Commissioner wish to remove any items? Seeing none, can we have a motion, please?
I move to approve the Housing Authority Consent Agenda.
Seconded.
It has been moved by Commissioner Savis and seconded by Commissioner Scholl. Clerk, please call the poll.
Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye. It's approved. I will now adjourn as the Housing Authority Board and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners. And once again, Gary, what's next?
Next is the Consent Agenda for Clackamas County Board of Commissioners. Andrew, would you please read the Consent Agenda?
Consent Agenda. Item 2A. One, elected officials. Approval of previous business meeting minutes. B, technology services. One, approval of a board order to authorize a purchase order with CDW Corporation for Exegrid Tiered Backup Storage, Exegrid Optical Switch, and three years of support maintenance. Total contract value is $199,999.26, and the estimated life cycle of this equipment is five years. Funding is through county-approved ARPA funds. No county general funds are involved. C, one, approval of a grant application to the U.S. Department of Transportation National Culvert Removal Replacement and Restoration Grant Program for the Hackett Creek Culvert Replacements Project at East Mountain Creek Circle and East Hideaway Lane in Rodendron. Total grant value is $6,997,600, with matching funds of $1,399,520 in county road funds. No county general funds are involved. Two, approval of a contract with Metro Presort, Inc. for printing and mailing services to the Sustainability and Solid Waste Program. Total contract value is $578,677.67 for two years. Funding is through solid waste franchise fees and metro regional system fees. No county general funds are involved. D, Health Housing Human Services. One, approval of Amendment Number 7, increasing funding of an intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Health Authority for the financing of community mental health, addiction treatment, recovery and prevention, and problem gambling services. Amendment value is $401,562.40 for one and a half years. Total agreement value is increased to $17,967,595.75 for one and a half years. Funding is through the Oregon Health Authority. No county general funds are involved. Two, approval to accept a grant from the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration for treatment court programs. Total value is $2 million for five years. Funding is through the Federal Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration. No county general funds are involved. Three, approval of an intergovernmental agreement for the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Training and Employment Program. Agreement value is $162,482.36 for one year. Funding is through the Oregon Department of Human Services. No county general funds are involved. Four, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Canby to provide elderly and disabled transportation services. Total agreement value is $150,000 for one year. Funding is through statewide transportation improvement funds. No county general funds are involved. Madam Chair, that concludes the Consent Agenda.
Okay. Colleagues, does anyone want to remove anything from the Consent Agenda? Seeing none, may I have a motion, please?
I move for approval of the Consent Agenda.
Second.
Commissioner Scholl has moved for the approval of the Consent Agenda, and it's been seconded by Commissioner Savis. Can you please call the poll?
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye. It is approved. I will now recess as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as the Water Environment Services Board of Directors. Take it away, Administrator Schmidt.
Thank you, Chair. Next is the Consent Agenda for Water Environment Services. Andrew, would you please read the Consent Agenda?
Item 3A. Approval of a contract with Hazen &amp; Sawyer for the HVAC and Fume Hood Project at the Tri-City Water Quality Lab. Total contract value is $270,775 for one and a half years. Funding is through West Sanitary Sewer Construction Funds. No county general funds are involved. B, approval of a contract with Tappanay, Inc. for the Forest Main in the Intertie Two-Pump Station Expansion Project. Total contract value is $15,467,175.50 for two years. Funding is through West Sanitary Sewer Construction Funds. No county general funds are involved. C, approval of a contract with RL Reimers Company for the Carver Mitchell Creek Pump Station Upgrades. Total contract value is $297,775 for six months. Funding is through West Sanitary Sewer Construction Funds. No county general funds are involved. Madam Chair, that concludes the Consent Agenda.
Colleagues, does anybody wish to remove any items? Seeing none, can I have a motion?
I move to approve the Water Environmental Services Consent Agenda.
Seconded.
It's been moved by Director Savis and seconded by Director Scholl to approve the W. Water Environment Services Consent Agenda. Any further discussion? Seeing none, can we call the poll?
Director Schrader?
Aye.
Director Savis?
Aye.
Director Scholl?
Aye.
Okay. The motion is approved. We're moving right along. Commissioners, now, I will now adjourn as the Water Environment Services Board and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners.
Next is Public Communication.
All right. This portion of the agenda shall be limited to items of county business, which are probably the object of board consideration, and should be nonpartisan in nature, as the BCC is a nonpartisan governing body under Oregon-revised statutes and county code. Testimony is limited to three minutes. Comments shall be respectful and courteous to all. And as a reminder, you can have email submissions for public communication at bcc@clackamas.us, and they will be accepted as part of the public record. I will now open the meeting for public testimony. I will take in-person testimony first. It doesn't seem like we have a crowd here today. We do have some visitors. Welcome, ladies. Nice to see you today, as usual. And so, it doesn't look like we have any public testimony, so let's check. Anybody online?
This is now a call, if you are attending virtually, to please raise your hand if you wish to testify, and I will call on you.
Okay.
This is the last chance to raise your hand for public testimony if you're attending virtually. Madam Chair, I see none.
All right. So we will now close the public communication portion of this meeting, and we will move on. Gary, I think next is some good news from you, right?
Yes, next, County Administrator update. That's me. I like to share the good work of our county employees and our programs. Today, or this month, is National Hispanic Heritage Month in the United States, and our employees and programs have done many things to help honor that. And first off, I want to recognize our staff at the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District. You heard about this at your board meeting last night. The district hosted the Third Annual Fiesta Latina N.L. Parque, or Latin Party in the Park. This community festival celebrates Latino culture and heritage in the Clackamas area and is held at North Clackamas Park. 1,500 people, 1,500 people showed up to this event last weekend to learn about diverse Hispanic traditions through food, music arts, crafts, music performances, kids' activities, and more. NCPRD partnered with 93.1 L-Ray Radio on the event, and that's part of the reason why the turnout was so big, because everyone heard about it. This was a, this turnout was a 27% increase from last year's turnout, and last year's turnout was the largest ever at that time. So we beat the record for this year, and hopefully will be even more next year. So thank you to our staff at the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District for all they do to serve our community. Next, as you know, Commissioners, the Los Flores Housing Development opened earlier this month in Oregon City. Commissioner West was at that groundbreaking event on behalf of you Commissioners. This new development, as this new development, resident programs and services are operated by Hacienda CDC, a Latino-led community development organization. Hacienda is one of Clackamas County's important culturally-specific partners that help us deepen our effectiveness among our Latino and other communities, including services like pass to ownership, homeownership, after-school activities, financial coaching, health services, community garden programming, and more. Thank you to our staff in Health Housing Human Services and the Clackamas County Housing Authority that have helped work on this development and support this work. So those are just two of, I'm sure, many, many more examples of our staff's great work, and in particular, in honor of National Hispanic Heritage Month. That is my update for today. Thank you, Commissioners.
Great. I'll make a few comments about that, but first, I have colleagues that I hope will have some other good things to tell us today. Commissioner Scholl, what have you got for us?
Well, good morning, Clackamas County, on this nice full day. I, as I get around the county, I often have residents of the county tell me that they feel like they're not empowered in politics today, and I always remind them that they are the most powerful element in our government, and that's the voice of the people. When combined by tens and hundreds and thousands, hundreds of thousands and millions, that is where the political power really is in America. And if every constituent, every resident of Clackamas County understands that and takes action to be part of our government, we will end up with a much better government. And like I've reminded people several times over the last few months, go to the Clerk's website, click on the link there to check your voting registration to make sure your address is correct. If you've moved or you know somebody who has moved recently, make sure they go on there and update their registration information so that when the voter pamphlets go out and the ballots go out next month, that they'll go to the right location. Often, many people say, our young people are too busy doing life's things, growing, going to school, working, maybe starting a family, to be involved in politics. This morning, I had a dialogue with my two sons, Matthew and Morgan, who are both residents of Happy Valley. And I want to share some, a thought from my 30-year-old son, Morgan, who wrote to me this morning, quote, "If anyone still needs proof that many of our career politicians are operating as a uniparty, Dick Cheney supports Kamala Harris. The parties don't matter to them. It's all a facade to divide people into two camps, which gives them extreme power and control over the population. Democracies eventually turn into a totalitarian government. Republiques have a chance, as long as people maintain them, to give power and control to the people," unquote. That's from Morgan Scholl this morning. And I think many young people share that same attitude. They understand what's going on in America. They're concerned about it, and they know the importance of everybody participating in our government. I'd like to thank our county clerk and our county elections manager. They're doing a fabulous job, but they will do an even better job if everybody in the county takes part and ensures that the voter rolls are accurate and that everybody's registration is accurate. Also, this November, once again, on the organ-wide ballot that everybody in the state will see, there are a number of measures. I'm not going to go over this in detail. You're going to have to read your voter pamphlet statement, and everybody should do that religiously. But there are some measures I want to share with you to make sure that when you mark your ballot, you're familiar with them. Measure 115 has to do with giving ability to the legislature to impeach elected officials. Measure 116 has to do with giving, if passed, would give the legislature the authority to regulate compensation for elected officials. Rank, Measure 117 is ranked choice voting. Measure 118 is yet another sales tax that, if passed, would make Oregon one of the, probably the most expensive place in the nation for business to operate. And Measure 119 has to do with the unionization of cannabis workers. You need to be familiar with everything on your ballot. Again, read that voter pamphlet statement. And one final comment about politics in America today. You know, we've seen here recently a second alleged attempt on the life of a candidate for the presidency of the United States, and it seems like America doesn't really understand the level of conflict in politics that we're witnessing now. And I like to remind everyone that it's our responsibility to act, talk, negotiate in a peaceful way, to express our political ideologies and attitudes and ideas, and not to go to violence to compensate for the lack of peaceful negotiation. Everyone needs to be involved. Everyone needs to take place, take part in our government in a peaceful way. And so there are some things that I want people to think about. Again, one more time, everybody is powerful when they cast their vote. The 36 counties, the clerks will wrap up your vote in your county and then send it to the Secretary of State. The Secretary of State will tally up the votes for candidates, and then the Electoral College will cast those votes when it comes time to actually elect the President of the United States. And remember, Oregon has eight electoral votes. That's two senators and six representatives, a total of eight. And make sure your vote is going to have an impact on how the Electoral College casts the votes for President of the United States this November. And if that's not serious enough for you, I'd like to end with, on this day in history. In this day in history, 19th September, 1959, Soviet leader Nikita Khrushchev was banned from visiting Disneyland. Thank you very much. True story.
Oh, that's a shame, though. I mean, that's another way to bring peace and community. Commissioner Savis, you're up, my friend.
The question is, was Mickey Mouse disappointed or not?
I'm sure he was.
Good afternoon or good morning, everyone. I want to just share a little bit about my background in the last 25 years in local government and why I'm more fond of local government than I am state or national politics. And I think it is perhaps the partisanship, and perhaps even more amplified ever, more than ever, is the divide and the fighting and so forth. It's unfortunate when there's real issues out there, but, you know, whether it's special districts or it's city or county governments, serving the people, doing things local, a lot of that's really nonpartisan. You know, as I always said, the pothole out on the road or the bad road is neither Republican or Democrat or any other ideology. It's a, it's, it's part of infrastructure that needs to be fixed. So I strive to try to solve those problems and look locally and try to distance myself in this role from that. And, you know, I think on the other side, as a voter, you know, you have to put on all those hats when you vote for particular offices, so. But I just, you know, people have asked me, you know, what's next? And I, I just tell people, you know, I'm a local government person. I'm not aspiring to higher office, and I will continue that. And, you know, I just think about the situation we're in now compared to when I first took office, when I was running for office in 2010, 14 years ago. And I, I think about where we were and where we are, and I say we have a whole set of new problems that were, you know, not created by this county certainly, but created by our situation. And this morning, reflecting at our J-PAC meeting on a number of the charts and graphs, we're all referencing 2021 and 2022, as though that was the beginning of time. It was certainly an anomaly, and to have data and metrics based off of 2021 or 2022 is not fair to look at, you know, where we were prior, where we're going, and perhaps what our targets are when it comes to whether it's transit ridership, or it's safety, or it's crime, or some of those things that impact that. It's with, you know, some, it is with some concern that, that the problems we're facing are sometimes, on these state measures like Measure 110, you know, Measure 110 moved the needle, in a sense, and changed a number of things during that same period of time. And I don't know how we disaggregate some of the data to figure out what was influenced by Measure 110 and what was influenced by the pandemic itself, and whether, as it relates to crime or safety, or even frankly, some of the, some of the polling on people's thoughts, or what, what people think are the most important things or their concerns. And economically, I just always come down to, you know, you gotta, I grew up poor, I grew up hungry, and I go back to what it was like every day, you know, going to bed hungry. And you look at the price of food today, and I just wonder how many more people, proportionally more people today, are struggling to put food on the table. And just knowing that inflation is, inflation might be coming down, the prices have not. The prices have not been commensurate with the, with the decrease of inflation, and hopefully there will be some adjustment. We don't know that, but just be mindful that our kids in school are, you know, they need nutrition, and our families need nutrition, and it's just, just very, very tough times, let alone all the issues with housing and homelessness and drug addiction and lacking the recovery centers and lacking the mental health. And I don't know how we, Commissioner Schrader, Commissioner Scholl, I don't know how we get the state to step up. I think the state, at least on the mental health front, I think has a, whether you look at it from an efficiency standpoint or a scale of how to implement all that, but I think that that is the state's place to step into. It's not our place. We can be part of that and be helpful with that. But, you know, I, I am just concerned when I read certain articles about, you know, what the state wants to look and audit, the, how, how the locals are implementing mental health. It's really their role, more so than it is our role. I appreciate, while we appreciate the funding that we get to do some of that, to me, I see it more as a partnership, not simply just a funding mechanism. So I think we need to look at also policy, which doesn't cost any money. You know, what does it cost to, or not cost, but what, what, what does it take to get us to look at what it takes to institutionalize someone who really needs to be institutionalized, unfortunately? I mean, it's not a good, good day, but that, what, that, forgot the term that's called, but I think commitment or whatever that term is for, for getting people that need, need 24-hour assistance and help, who should not be on the streets. I mean, that's not, it's not humane when you think about that. As I, as I look around and I, and some of the people that are suffering with mental health issues or Alzheimer's and things like that, I mean, they need, they need that 24-hour care. And again, those challenges are, are now on the local level, where, again, I think those partnerships have to be shared at the state level as well. And the disinvestment in the state of Oregon on mental health is catching up with us today, and that's, I think, why we rank in the country near the bottom. I'm hoping our state legislature will take that bull by the horns and make some policy changes. So that's what I have for today.
Great. Okay. Well, we kind of have a theme going here, I think, because one of the things I brought today was a short primer on our history definitions, structures, and authorities, and it's America's county governments. And we have 3.6 million public servants in this country, representing one out of every 50 American workers, and annually, counties invest over $600 billion in our communities. And we are the level of government. I always call it, we are the hidden hand of government because we're present in so many lives across the country. And, you know, a lot of times people ask me, what do counties do? And my off-the-cuff answer is everything, pretty much. You name it, we do it. We're the implementers. We're that sweet spot between the policy and actually on-the-ground implementation with the staff and the professionals that we work with to serve the public here. And I've been working on pulling together, I think I told you folks the other day, I got my, I have renewed my teaching license, and I've been looking at a program called Solutions for Civility from the Center for Civic Education. And this is a program that's been implemented across the United States, and it has three different parts to it. We, the people, the citizen, and the Constitution. And it engages students with in-depth studies of the Constitution, fundamental principles. It looks, includes textbooks, professional learning, and experience lessons that illuminate the history and importance of our constitutional democracy. Some of the research from a place called Georgetown said going through this program, kids saw 63% improvement in middle school student civic scores, close to an 80 cent improvement in high school student civic scores, and 69% of middle school and 73% of high school students reported that they pay more attention to what's going on in government and politics. And to your point, Commissioner Scholl, 72% of middle school and 77% of high school students felt that they are more prepared to become involved in their community, which is what your point is. So I, I think this is a great program. So, I, I think this is a great program. You can look it up at Center for Civic Education, find them online, and they have the We the People, the Citizens, and the Constitution. They have another project called Project Citizen, challenges students to work together in a civil cooperative way on policy. It puts the partisanship behind and really just is a six-step process that gets kids together to research a problem and come together and help solve that. So, it's also a lesson in how you cooperate, how you discuss, you know, your differences, and, you know, we have a difference in philosophy, I think, sometimes, but most, I think, actually all of the time, we all have the same goals in mind, and so, one of the things I like about it, it focuses on outcomes. Okay? And then, this is another one, it's Civil Discourse, an American legacy.
There you go.
There you go. It promotes civil discourse in high school students and adult learners, and basically, they have modular lesson plans adaptable for adults or students, and it is, it's really fantastic. And I found out about it through the National Association of Counties, largely because they have a big role in educating people about what counties do. And this is the primer I bought because as I start to work with kids on this project, Oregon City, I hope, if we keep my fingers crossed, Gary, we can move that forward, we have a whole short primer in particular on county governments, history definitions, structures, and authorities, and this is everything anybody wanted to know about counties. And I've been obviously going through it, trying to develop a curriculum, but the interesting thing, so as, I think as, as we go through and I get my time to speak, I'm going to pull some things out from this one document just to, you know, through the next year or so, just to let people know, okay, this is what county government does. And there is a difference between government and governance. Government is kind of the structural piece, governance is how we interact, how we talk, how we implement policies, how we move ahead with what we need to do. So, how did county governments get started? You'll love this piece of factoid here. County governments, we trace our roots to the English shires of the ninth century, Rechristened counties after the Norman invasion in 1066, they served a dual function. They act as, as an administrative arm of the crown or national government, as well as the citizens' local government. Power in the shire slash county was shared between the shire reeve, which has morphed into sheriff at this point, and the justice of the peace. And so, the structure was adopted along the eastern seaboard of North America by the colonists, and the thing about counties, they're adaptable to, to really meet different economic needs and geographic needs of the colony. So, the first county governments in the colonies were established in Virginia, near Williamsburg, by King Charles I in 1634, and the colonial governor appointed local officials to serve on a county court, the governing arm of the county. So, there's also a lot of different models, which I won't go into here, but I think I have multiple copies, folks, so if I can get you one to do, but I think civic education and how we treat each other has, has got to be kind of front and center. And so, and you guys know most of my philosophy is this, and not left, not right, but forward. We can get caught up here and here, but, you know, my attitude is, what's the solution to the problem? How do you move forward? What's the best way to do it? And, you know, so sometimes when it gets lost in, you know, political discussions, I think that we need to remove ourselves, I mean, politics is politics, but we need to remove ourselves from that and really focus on the end game and, and outcomes, because then it makes it so everybody can work together. So, that is what I have for the, the day today, and I'm glad that you mentioned it, Commissioner Scholl.
Yeah.
Fantastic, and I, thank you, Paul, for all you do, and woo-hoo. And there's community engagement tools, too, that I'll be using as I work through this stuff here. County Governance Project, National County Government Month, County Landscapes, Counties Matter Campaign, all of this, I-Civic Student Education Goals is through our National Association of Counties, because you're right, the only way we can preserve our democracy is to be participatory citizens in a republic, and it is the people that direct us one way or the other, and we are not in this for the glory, I don't think. I mean, it's, it's fun that people know your name, I guess, sometimes not, but, but I think that the real issue is we have to have this as a notion of service and public service to people. So, that's what I've got for today, and I'm glad we're all, yeah, we're all in accord with this, so. Gary, I don't see anything else right now.
Nothing else, Chair.
All right.
The word I was looking for earlier was civil commitment.
Yeah, yeah, that's it, yeah.
Vice Chair Schrader, in your, talking about early English government, you fail to recall Robin Hood and his Merry Men.
There you go. [laughing] They were, yeah, they were the Ravelousers.
And don't forget Errol Flynn as Robin Hood, one of the greatest movies ever.
Actually, it's one of my favorite movies, you know, kind of like Captain Blood Two, remember, he takes the knife and slides across the sail. We're really digressing today, you know, but it's fun stuff. All right.
Where I thought she was going, we should bring up counts back in the day when, you know, a count, if it was, if it was a female count, it was called a countess.
Countess.
Countess, but, you know, so they, they were people that were charged with a piece of territory, which were essentially counties, and then, you know.
That's true, yeah, exactly that. And, and in fact, they use the census is really, that uses county, one of the big things is they use the county borders as the information, the basis for the geographic area for census tracks. That was the other thing I thought was kind of interesting. That's, again, another factoid that only those of us that are civic geeks [laughing] try to do.
How old we are.
Yeah. Well, we need to have civics in high school and junior high, and I think we have a role in the county, and Gary's been very gracious to me.
I think you've conducted business today, Commissioners.
I think I want to shut down the meeting, Chair.
Is it time to leave now?
You can shut down the meeting now.
I know, I enjoy your company so much, I can't do it. All right, we're adjourned, folks. Thank you.